Hillary, did District Two take the lead for the most attendees?
You know, I still think District, I still think District Three was in, was in the lead.
I think I saw like forty-one at one point.
Yeah, District Three actually went up to forty-six. And then a few people obviously got bored and dropped off, but. But yeah, I mean, so far, you know, we've been fairly consistent with attendance.
So can the attendees hear us at this point?
They can. Yeah, we're just providing them some entertainment while we wait for. But it actually looks like the attending numbers have flattened out, so we might want to just go ahead and get started.
Okay. So, welcome everyone. My name is Tim Wheeler. I'm the, one of the directors on the District Four, La Plata Electric Board. And I'd like to welcome all the attendees who've taken time out of their schedule in an evening to come and join us for the town hall. We will have some introductions here of the people who are from LPA and on the call, including directors. We will make some notations or some explanation of new boundaries between District Four and District Two. One of the staff, the, the ever effervescent Dan Harms will present a presentation. The presentation and topics tonight are essentially around our power supply. And we will follow that with a Q and A around the power supply. And then a general Q and A. And about eight twenty PM, we will stop questions. And to go to a door prize drawing. And I, I think that covers the intro at this point. So, like I said, I'm on the District Four Board. I've lived in La Plata County for over twenty-six years. I was elected to the LPA Board in two thousand eighteen. I'm currently the Board Treasurer. And also LPA's representative for its seventy-five percent owned subsidiary, Fast Track Communications, which is a fiber middle mile broadband company. I found serving on the LPA Board very gratifying with a great deal of personal learning and lots of challenges. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to represent District Four members. And actually, all the members of La Plata Electric when we, when we meet as a board. I want to mention how impressed I am with the professionalism of our CEO. The staff that, that make sure the lights are on every day and the employees. They all work very tirelessly to keep the lights on. That are, and our power costs affordable. And they also work for power that is clean as possible. So I'm going to introduce here the other two directors, each district. There's four districts in LPA. And there's three directors in each one of those. So I'll introduce the two that are here tonight. Sue McWilliams and John Witchell are the other two directors. And Sue, if you want to take a couple of minutes to, to address the attendees, that would be great.
All right. Thanks, Tim. I am Sue McWilliams. I was elected to the board in May of there.
Sue, I think you're having a little trouble with the, with the audio or broadband connection. Are you still there? Well, you can see why we're working on broadband. As a, as a, as a initiative within the co-op. Sue, I'm going to come back to you. Maybe if you can hear this, you might want to just come in without the video for a moment. So you can make that intro. That would maybe make it a stable connection. John, do you want to say anything?
Sure. Hi, my name's John Witchell. I was just appointed to fill Jack's seat. I attended my first board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I'm still coming up to speed as quickly as I can. I'm really, really glad to be here. I've been in, I've been living in Drango with my wife and two kids for just a bit over ten years now. And we live just north of the Bardy Ranch. And I've been, spent a fair, a decent amount of my career in solar and in energy. I worked for Solar City, which became Tesla Energy. And spent the rest of my time as a software developer, some fairly technical. And I'm just really glad to be here and I'm really fired up to try to help our community. It's a, this has been a great opportunity to be able to figure out a way to give back and maybe give back in a way that's, that's meaningful. You know, to things that I'm passionate about, particularly energy. So. So stop there.
Thank you, John. I don't see Sue back yet. I'm, I'm sorry, attendees that she's having a little trouble. When she comes back in, I might break in and ask her to finish her introduction. At this point, I think there's another director on the call. We probably won't just allow them to, to be on visually, but I want to acknowledge Colleen McInnes, who is another director on the LPA Board from District Two. And I don't know that I see anyone else at this point who's another director. If the staff see anything, please let me know, or anyone I should say. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Jessica Matlock, our, well, I think of her as a new CEO, but I think she's been here over a year. And maybe you could then provide an introduction of all of your leadership staff that's on the, on this call too. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Let me, can I pause you one second? I see Sue is back. Hi, Sue.
Hi, sorry about that. We have been having internet issues with spectrum and it's crazy because it's supposed to be cable. I guess that's why we need better broadband.
You want to go ahead, Sue, and, and finish your intro, please? Thanks. You went on, you went on mute there.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm not sure where I left off, but we are happy to be over here in La Plata County with kids and great kids and happy to serve our membership in District Four and around La Plata and our Chalata County. Thank you.
Okay, Jessica, you can take it away there.
All right. Thank you, Tim. So Jessica Matlock, and yes, I've been here for about a year and four months. And I'm really excited to be at La Plata Electric and be back home in Colorado where I grew up. So it's nice to be near my family and be in the best community I feel in Colorado. And just don't tell anyone. I've been told. Don't say anything. Otherwise, everyone moves here. So anyway, thank you for joining us tonight. And then, so I will have Dan introduce himself next.
Good evening, everybody. Dan Harms, La Plata Electric, Vice President of Grid Solutions. Grid Solutions is the department that contains the engineering group and a lot of think tank people that try to make our grid run as efficiently and smoothly as possible. So that's what we're doing here. And I pass the torch over to Hillary.
Hi, everyone. My name is Hillary Knox. I'm VP of Communications at LPA. You may have had some emails from me in your inbox. And I would really encourage you to reply to those and be as engaged with us as, as you want to be. And I really look forward to hearing more of your comments and questions when we get to that, that point of the evening. And thanks for joining.
Hey, Nadine. Hi, I'm Nadine Antiveros, VP of People and Culture. And our team gets to serve our incredible employee base. And I'm grateful for our employees who are on our call today. Thanks for being here, all of you members.
Thanks, Nadine. Drew.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm Drew Timmerman, Vice President of Information Technologies. We're all the nerds that work on the computers around LPA. It's a great place to be. Love being a part of this cooperative and this community. And so welcome to everyone this evening. Thanks for being here.
Thanks. And Drew's being a little modest. He also protects our infrastructure from cyber attacks. So that we can maintain the flow of electricity across the grid and through our substations. So thanks to Drew and his team. And Jerry, speaking of making sure the, the electricity is flowing, if you want to introduce yourself.
Evening, everybody. It's a pleasure being here with you. I'm Jerry Sutherland, VP of Operations. And we are the big trucks you see around town, the line trucks, bigger trucks, the bucket trucks. If you see any of them hanging around, wave, say hello, tell them thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. And he's also being modest in that many of the linemen are out in the middle of the night, out during storms. It seems like power outages occur at Thanksgiving and Christmas. And oftentimes, the crews have to leave their families. We have a pretty young crew, and so they've got a lot of little kids. So just please thank them and give them your patience because they're working as hard as they can. All right. Speaking of crews and Pagosa area, Garrett.
Unmute. Good evening. Garrett Hammer, District Manager here in Pagosa. Been with La Plata for about nine years now. Love the direction that we're headed. Thanks for having me. Go Pirates.
Garrett. Okay, and Carl.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Carl Ramsey. I'm the Vice President of Finance. So I guess it's probably pretty self-explanatory. I make sure the bills get paid and that the bills go out to you guys. So worry about that. I've only been with LPA for nine months. Previously worked for another big electric co-op up in Oregon. But I absolutely love it here. Everyone is so friendly, wonderful place to live. And it's a wonderful place to work and couldn't think of a better place to be. So it's really nice to be here with you all.
I think that's everyone. Is that correct? Okay. All right. This is the presentation period, the time for that. And I, I would like, if possible, to bring up the, the new district map so we can just make sure that people are aware of that. We recently, as a, as a, as a co-op, we, each year, our policy requires that we take a look at the boundaries of them, of the district so that they stay as balanced as possible for numbers of members. And, and we made a, an adjustment between District Two and District Four. And partly that was to balance, but it also was a way to provide more easily identifiable boundaries. Previously, it was just a sort of invisible boundary that had to do with townships, I think, boundaries. And so we changed it to become the southern boundary of District Four is highway, US Highway one sixty. And then the western boundary removed from five fifty to follow Hermosa Creek. And so actually, I guess that, that actually changed three district boundaries, District Three, District Two, and District Four. So does any of the staff want to add anything to that? I'm not sure who would be appropriate. No?
So I would just add, if I could, it's kind of confusing, I know. And if people are still wondering what district they're in, in our, on our website, lpa.coop, there's a section called About Us. And in there is a page called Voting Districts. And there's a link there where you can just put in, input your address, and it will tell you exactly what district you're in.
Thank you, Hillary. That's, yeah, that's very helpful. Okay, the next would be, we're going to introduce the topic here, which, as I mentioned previously, is the power supply. That's sort of the, the, the main focus of this town hall. And you know, LPA has been in a, in the process of examining our future supplier, power supply options for, for several years. We, we have had a couple of different committees in the last couple of years, looking at long-term power supply. And then also looking specifically at a power, with a power supply committee, at what are all the options and whether or not those options could drive lower rates, cleaner power, and more local generation for our members. Which have been requests that many members have made over the last number of years. And we do not yet have all the pieces of that puzzle needed to make a final decision. And but whatever that final decision is, it will have a very lasting impact in LPA and our membership. And the following presentation that Dan Harms will give will provide an overview of why our power supply is important. What options are on the table, and what are the major drivers of our decision-making and our next steps? So Dan, feel free to take it away. I will just make one last point is that after this, we will have a Q and A. You can type in some questions in the Q and A below down there. Or wait, and we will try to call on you if you want to be an opportunity to speak and ask that question directly. But that will come after the presentation. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Tim. I'm going to go ahead and fire this up then. Just a second here. We should be up and running now. So good evening, everybody. Again, welcome and thanks for joining us this evening. It's so always great to, when I look over on the attendee list and see so many familiar names on there. So thanks for joining us. As Tim said, we're going to be talking about LPA's future power supply options, what some of the work that we've done already is. Where we think we're heading, where we'd like to go. And certainly, you know, presentation is designed to try to answer some of the questions you might have already. But certainly, if your question isn't answered, as Tim mentioned, type that question in, raise your hand, and we'll make sure that to get it before the evening ends here. So I will jump into it. First off, why does it matter so much about power source? You know, why are we focused on this so much? People ask us that question quite a bit. So I have three, three reasons why right here. The number one reason is cost. As you can see from this pie chart over here, that sixty-four percent of our expenses at La Plata Electric are purchased power. That's because La Plata Electric's primary function is a distribution utility. We will purchase that power and send that out to our members. And so sixty-four percent of our expenses that we have is to purchase that power. And then the remaining pieces of pie that you see over here, those are what it takes for us to get that and deliver that power to you. All the poles, the wires, the transformers, all the people necessary to make that happen all fall into the remainder over there. And so obviously, it's a, it's an important thing for us to watch power supply. So that's seventy-two million dollars a year of expense for us. And so even if we can make a one percent difference in that, that makes a big difference to all of us as members. Then the second reason is local control. Co-ops in their nature have always had roots in local control. And in the past, like many decades ago, it was always best to have maybe centralized generation because the technology wasn't there to have distributed generation around. But today is different. Now the technologies have changed. It makes it a lot more economical and feasible to put distributed generation around the areas. And it can even be more cost-effective than having large centralized generations. So that's one of the reasons why we certainly want to take a careful look at all this. And if we have the local control, we can put in the type of generation facilities that our membership desires. And as we, as us being a cooperative, we want to meet the needs of our membership. You'll see in this slide also is LPA's vision statement. You'll see key words like shaping the future, trustworthy, community partnerships, innovative, forward-thinking. This is a vision statement that was developed by our, by our employees to help, you know, create that vision for what we want La Plata Electric to be. And community partners is a big part of that. And we feel that through local control of generation, we can achieve that. Then the third reason is sustainability. You're probably aware of a new overarching goal that LPA created in two thousand eighteen. At that time, we set the goal to cut our carbon emissions from power supply by fifty percent from those twenty eighteen levels. And to do this by the year twenty thirty. So that's, that's definitely a very healthy goal for us to accomplish. And, but I think what makes it even healthier is the second part of this goal here, which is to do it while keeping our cost of electricity low. Now, we picked the number seventy percent of our Colorado peers because in twenty eighteen, that was our benchmark. That's where we were and stood in comparison to other Colorado cooperatives. So what we're trying to say is that we're going to reduce our carbon emissions while keeping our rates competitive to the same point they've, they've always been. Now, this is a slide that shows where our generation mix stands today and where we hope we can get that in five years from now. But first, let's look at the generation mix we have today. We purchased ninety-five percent of our power requirements from Tri-State GNT. GNT stands for Generation and Transmission. They're the company that we're purchasing our power from. You'll see in this piece of pie over here, this five percent piece, that is five percent that LPA has contractual ability to install ourselves. Now, we've installed pretty much all that five percent right now. And so we can't put anymore in unless we get additional flexibility from Tri-State. And that's certainly one of our primary goals to establish as we go through looking at power supply. So the other ninety-five percent here is the mix that comprises Tri-State's generation portfolio. You'll see a large portion of that. The largest portion, of course, is coal. Eighteen percent is natural gas and twenty-five percent is renewables. While just a small two percent is run by diesel for definitely peaking type generation. Now, if we can implement some changes that we're hoping to make, whereby we have the flexibility maybe to install another fifty megawatts of solar power within our system, then we can increase our renewable portion of that pie up to eighteen percent. And if we're increasing our piece of pie, we're buying less from Tri-State. And so those other pieces go down as well. Now, Tri-State also has some plans to become more renewable as they move into the future. And so hopefully, this other piece of pie showing Tri-State renewables becomes larger and the fossil fuel pieces become smaller. And Tri-State has some current PPAs that are going to be, they're planning on implementing in the coming years whereby they will be installing more renewable generation is what their plans are currently. Then we get a question a lot of times, people asking, but aren't renewables more expensive? And I've got this very interesting graph I'd like to show, share with you here, showing that, yes, maybe ten years ago, that was the case. Renewables were, were more expensive. So this chart right here is showing over the last ten years, how different generation, the cost of different generation has trended. As you can see, the green line is reflective of that of solar. And so solar used to be three hundred and fifty-nine dollars a megawatt hour. Now, many of us that are looking at our power bills are more accustomed to numbers as far as maybe cents or dollars per kilowatt hour. And on your electric bill, we're paying twelve point five cents per kilowatt hour. So if you make that equivalent, use that equivalent terminology over here, this is thirty-five point nine cents. That's what solar was in two thousand nine. But now, as you can see, the cost of solar has declined tremendously over the last ten years to where it's down to forty dollars a megawatt hour or four cents a kilowatt hour. And so that's a big change and something that we would like to have more than our, in our own portfolio. On the other hand, as you can see by the brown line, which is indicative of that, of how coal generation has trended, it has only gotten more expensive over the last few years. So in about two thousand thirteen, was about the time those lines crossed. Whereas natural gas has stayed fairly level throughout the years. So what is our current power supply today? You know, what kind of restrictions do we have? What kind of contracts do we have? Currently, as I mentioned, we are in that contract with Tri-State GNT. And that contract goes through the year twenty fifty. Tri-State GNT on our behalf has increased transmission facilities into our area, performing those upgrades. They add generation when we need, when our load grows as well. And so that's why they have a contract that goes out through twenty fifty is to ensure that, that we can cover that investment that they've made on our behalf. But what we'd like to have is additional flexibility, and that's our goal down, down here. And because since we go through twenty fifty and we have a contract that says Tri-State supplies ninety-five percent of our power needs, as shown over here in the second part, that limits what LPA can put in to only five percent. And we want the flexibility, obviously, to put in more than that. And if we can add, get the flexibility to add that fifty megawatts of solar, then we can increase, as I showed in that pie chart earlier, our LPA's renewables section up to eighteen percent. And also reflective in those power charts, those pie charts that we looked at earlier, we saw how much was fossil fuel versus how much was renewables. And it sits at about a seventy-thirty split currently today. In order for us to meet our goal by twenty thirty, we need to basically invert those numbers. And we need to have seventy percent renewables by that time in order to cut our carbon significantly by our, what we're looking to do. So as we go into the future and we're looking at how we're going to accomplish that, we've adopted, or the Board has adopted a strategy called our three-pronged strategy. And that is getting staff direction to pursue three different paths to try to acquire this flexibility that we're looking to, to accomplish here. So path number one is to pursue more flexibility in our current contract. Right now, we have that five percent limitation. If we could get that increased in policy up to ten, fifteen, twenty percent. And obviously, we'd have a lot more space to do the projects, types of projects our membership wants. The second prong, or the second, yeah, the second prong of this strategy here is to pursue something we're calling a partial exit or a partial requirements contract. Now, this is a policy and a method that the Tri-State Board has been working on over several months. And they've developed some policies and are just now having that as an option that's becoming available to members such as La Plata Electric to take advantage of. So it's something we're looking very closely at. There, I'll talk about this here a little bit more on our path on, on that, that strategy as well. Then on the third prong, that involves a full exit of Tri-State. As we saw in that first, one of those first slides, purchase power is a large percentage of our expense. And so if we can find a lower source of power and we can do that for our full power supply, that can have a big impact on reducing our expenses in the future. And part of that, though, for us to determine if this is a feasible option for us, we have a lot of data to gather. One of those things is knowing how much it's going to cost to exit Tri-State, exit our contract that we currently have. And when we've asked Tri-State in the past about how much that would be for us to exit, tries to refuse to provide us a number on what that was going to be. That's what led us to the litigation that we currently have at the Colorado PUC, which is what, PUC is Public Utilities Commission. And so that's what CPUC stands for. And FERC is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Those are two governing entities that we can take our case to and try to have a determination of what a fair and equitable number for us to exit our Tri-State agreement would be. And it's only after we know that number when we can actually make a rational decision on which path would not be the best one to take. Pursuing each one of these threes with three paths with equal vigor and one of them will surface to the top as the winner. Now, there's major drivers that work into our calculations and our determination of which path might be the better path to take. All three of these have these elements, or all three prongs have these elements to some degree. But one is the cost of replacement power. Obviously, anything that we exit from Tri-State, we have to replace one way or another. And so the less expense that we can pay towards a replacement power supply, obviously, the better off we, we are. So in May of last year and recently, in, I think it was about August of this year, we have asked the marketers and other people that provide replacement power to provide us indicative pricing of what that might look like. So we've got a pretty good idea on what replacement power might look like. And we've also got in pricing on what different individual solar projects or wind projects or different renewable type projects would be within our own service territory. So replacement power is one of the first major drivers of our decision. The second is transmission expense. We have to obviously know how we're going to get that power if it's not located within our service territory to La Plata Electric. And we can put an awful lot of renewables onto our system here locally, but we may not be able to put enough in to serve the full load that we have. So we may have to bring power in from the outside. To do this, obviously, we need a connection and transmission system to do so. So there's a lot to understanding what those parameters look like, and we will be looking at that as well. Then the third element, of course, is the buyout or buy-down cost. We usually refer to the phrase buyout when we're talking about a full buyout of Tri-State. And buy-down is typically the terminology we'll use under a partial exit because we're buying down a portion of our contract. And knowing these two numbers here will absolutely help us figure out which way is the best path for us to take. So here are a few next steps and maybe some dates for us to look at going into the near future here. First off, with the Colorado Public Utilities Commission, CPUC, they've provided some preliminary rulings, we're waiting for some written orders coming in November fifth on exactly all the details behind the rulings that they've made recently. And then on December ninth, we're awaiting some information from FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. That'd be a settlement conference, which would be another venue for us to discuss some of these topics as well. Those two dates right there are related more to the full buyout. Whereas in regards to the partial buyout, there is currently going on right now what Tri-State is calling an open season. And what an open season is, is Tri-State has said, we have three hundred megawatts of capacity that we'll let our members self-supply with. So different members from Tri-State can bid in and try to acquire a portion of that three hundred megawatts. And if they do, then they'll have that ability to replace that much capacity in the system with their own local generation. And there would be a buy-down number associated with that. And so those are certainly some numbers we're looking at right now is how much we can put, exactly how much we can install local generation for, how much that buy-down is going to be as well. I think that brings us to the last slide there, Mr. Wheeler. And I'd be welcome, we'd be welcome to take the question. I'm gonna go ahead and stop sharing my screen here. We can always pull it back up if somebody has a question on a specific slide.
Great, thank you, Dan, for that presentation. At this time, we're opening up the Q and A for the power supply portion of this presentation that we just had. And participants can use their Q and A button on their screen to type a question, which is seen by the panelists here. Or they can raise their hand to pose a live question if they would prefer. We will, I will try my best to respond in the order in which you were raised your hand or put your question up. When, if you are called with a live question, please limit it to three minutes, your question or comment. And please identify yourself where you live and then state your question. So at this time, I noticed there are a couple of Q and A questions in the queue already. A couple of them are not power supply rated or related, I should say. And we will come back to those after this power supply, when we open it up to more general questions. So the first question on the, on the Q and A is typed in was from John Purser. And it says, can you discuss Tri-State's solar initiatives in LaPlata County and Dolores Canyon? Isn't Tri-State's plan to add two hundred megawatts in LPA's area? And first, I'll see if either of the other directors want to try and answer that question. I don't see you jumping forth, so Dan, maybe I could ask you to weigh in there first, please?
Absolutely. Yeah, if anybody's gone online to Tri-State's website, you can find their responsible energy plan there. It'll show Tri-State's proposed solar installations. One is in LaPlata County and there's one called Dolores Canyon. The, both of those projects are moving forward. The one for LaPlata County, it is proposed to be a hundred and twenty megawatts. Of course, finding land around LaPlata County is always a difficult endeavor, so they're definitely working on that project still. And I'm not sure about the status of the one in Dolores Canyon, but I think that one's moving forward. But another one in LaPlata County is, they're still in the site acquisition phase of that right now.
Okay, the next question, there was a live question from Redak Williams, who has his hand up. Could we open that up for him to, Drew, to ask that question, please? Please identify yourself.
Okay, my name is Redak Williams. We have a home at eleven ninety-nine Deer Ridge in Forest Lakes, so right north of Bayfield. My question basically centers around the, whether we're trying to make our future plans based on emotions and the social agenda or based strictly on what the cost is to the consumer. And what I mean by that is the solar energy and wind energy are not reliable. It's always dark when the sun goes down and you get no energy from solar. And there are always times when the wind doesn't blow right and you can't get dependable energy from wind. So my question is, are we doing ourselves a favor by exiting from our relationship with Tri-State, which guarantees they will meet our demand by substituting, no, undependable. When I say undependable, I don't mean that facetiously. But wind and solar power, which is only good when the wind blows and when the sun shines. And what happens if you have days like that that run along consecutively? And now we find that we are not able to meet our power needs. Are we not still going to be needing to have a relationship with somebody like Tri-State regardless of the source of their energy to always be able to meet our demands? Which I'm, basically what I'm trying to do is say, I think we should make sure that we make our decisions on the future energy sources based on practicality rather than a desire to meet a social agenda of being politically correct.
Thank you, Redak. Sue or John, do you want to take a stab? Do you have an interest in responding to that? All right, I'll take a try and Dan, you can help me out or any of the staff if you want to. I, Redak, the, there are three drivers, as Dan's presentation outlined. We're trying to balance cost, carbon reduction and local generation. And reliability is always the most critical value that we have in trying to meet power supply needs. So we do not have a plan that would allow for decreased reliability of the power supply at this point. We have not made a decision to just, to exit from Tri-State at this point. That is a consideration. And like I said, the consideration that we have tries to balance the opportunity to have much lower costs, which is what is represented by renewable power like solar and wind. They are significantly less expensive than the coal power that we currently get. So that is a, that is a very key driver. And fortunately, that driver allows us to also take advantage of much cleaner power. And also, we are looking how we, how we can do that to provide local generation that will help our local economy rather than sending large portions of our power supply money to Denver. We would like to keep that here. Does anyone want to add anything to that reply?
I'll add a little more there, Tim. You know, you were, one of your concerns was reliability. What do you do when the sun doesn't shine, wind doesn't blow? There's always, you're right, there's always going to be a relationship with some entity that firms that power is what they, how they phrase that. And what that means is there's always some sort of dispatchable generation, whether that be hydro, possibly a natural gas peaking unit, that is there to firm it. Now, if you don't have those around, then you're also looking at different energy storage type systems, whether that be batteries stored, hydro, a variety of different things. So although, yeah, it's obvious that these are intermittent resources that come and go. And the key to making this successful is to find that right combination of energy storage, peaking units and renewables. Now, you know, for LaPlata Electric's case, we have a very level and steady load profile. And so there's a lot of space for us to be able to absorb renewable generation before needing any form of energy storage. So we can have, I'll say, low-hanging fruit that we can, we can grab on to by adding some solar. And then, you know, if we're still a partner with, with an entity such as Tri-State as a, like a partial arrangement would, would provide, then they're still firming that service and filling in the gaps when that solar is not available there. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you, Redak. And the next question is from Monique DeGiorgio. She typed it into the Q and A, so I'll read it. It says, I'm a member in District Four with an eight-point-six-four KW solar system and an EV charging station at my home. How is LPA supporting a member like me in accessing low-cost renewable energy for my home and transportation while transitioning to a clean renewable future for all members? Again, I'll see if either of our directors have, want to weigh in on that?
Sure, I'll do it.
Go for it, John, thanks.
I'm gonna break the seal. Yeah, I think, you know, I think the previous question and this question are to some degree related. And the answer is, it's a process, right? You, you, solar and, and wind has in the last few years become significantly cheaper than it was ten years ago, and it's achieved parity with the costs of coal. And, and so what you've done, Monique, is take your first step. You, you're, you're at the tip of the spear. You're putting solar on your, on your roof and you're taking advantage of, of, of some of those cost savings. And I think LPA will hopefully, you know, in the various different ways, you know, begin to step forward and adding solar to the portfolio. And, you know, we're, we're going to need, you know, alternative energy, not just solar and wind for, for months and years to come. You can't just turn it off for some of the reasons, you know, Dan identified. And, and our goal is to step forward one, one, one day at a time and find opportunities to, you know, have cleaner energy and renewable energy for everybody. But that is absolutely a process and it'll take a long time, you know, to go from where we are today to a completely clean future.
I would add a little bit to that, John, thanks for, for that. And, you know, your question about how is LPA supporting a member like you accessing low-cost renewable energy? I think one is that, you know, we have had our hands tied to a contract that runs till twenty fifty with our current incumbent supplier. And we have spent a great deal of time and money of the members to try and determine how we can lower our carbon footprint and reduce our power prices with a strategy that Dan just outlined, a three-pronged strategy that essentially is looking at three different methodologies of trying to find a way to do exactly what you're asking. And it's not easy because that contract is a very well-written and tight contract. And it ties us for the next almost, well, thirty years to an incumbent supplier who has some of the highest rates in Colorado as well as some of the highest carbon content. So we're taking the approach that we're trying to respond to our members first and then be a good member of Tri-State, another co-op that we're a part of with our contract. And I think setting a goal like Dan also explained around a strategic goal for lowering our carbon footprint and keeping our prices within, within the current range that we have or lower are, are evidence of what we are trying to do. Anybody else want to add anything to that? All right, I'm going to go on to the next question. Thank you, Monique. Michael Silver asks, why are some areas redlined for renewables? And Dan, I think that's a question that I hope you would be able to help us with, probably better than I could.
No problem. Yeah, if you go online, you'll see our renewable, our net metering renewable map. And it gives an indication of what areas can easily accept renewables, what areas might be more saturated than others. Now, we are working on updating that map right now because we've implemented some new changes, I'm excited to say, within our line extension or I should say our interconnection policy. And what that has allowed us to do is to put, take advantage of smart inverter settings. And so for these red areas, some of those red areas were red because they were at the upper end of voltage already. And adding additional solar resource to that sometimes pushes the voltage up even a little higher. But what we found that can happen with the new inverter settings is that we can put limits in there so that if the voltage does get a little high, it just backs down the production a little bit. Before, we'd have to say, no, you can't put that solar array in because it's going to cause high voltage. Now, we can say you can put it in, it might curtail a little bit, but you can definitely get the majority of the production still out of a system such as that. So if you have been denied in the past possibly or said that you had to have a major system improvement in order to put your system in, ask us again because things have changed a little bit. We've been working on reducing voltages at substations. And as I mentioned, we'll be updating that map pretty soon and hopefully that red goes to at least orange.
Thank you, Dan. I'm going to move to the next question here. John Purser asks, does replacement power have a specific carbon footprint? How can we guarantee meeting our strategic, a strategic goal with replacement power? And again, probably, Dan, I'm probably, I mean, I think it would be better if you took that question first, thanks. You're on mute, Dan. Dan, you're on mute, so we didn't hear that.
I was just saying, District Four is asking some tough questions here, Tim. Yeah, great question, John. The, you know, when we're buying power, obviously, if it's within our own service territory, power that we're putting in, we know the carbon footprint of that. It's going to be renewable installation, have no carbon. But if we're purchasing power outside of our area, bringing it in from a different supplier, then the question becomes, how do we know where that came from? There is tracking of generation with something called eTags. And it actually tracks the transition. I mean, we aren't tracking the electron by electron, but it does track the transaction and make sure that we get the power that we're subscribed to. So we would be, it's all real-time, we would be subscribing to power X amount of megawatts out of a wind facility over here or a solar facility over there, and that has to get tracked all the way to our doorstep. So that's how they, they track that replacement power.
Thank you. I hope that answered your question, John. The next one is from Eric Potter. He says, good presentation, Dan. Is there, he asks, is there a concern with having enough peak load capacity once we have shifted to solar and other non-peak renewables? And again, Dan, I think that's a fairly technical question that, again, I hasn't, I apologize for throwing these your way, but.
Good to hear from you. Welcome to join us. So is there a concern having enough peak capacity once shifted to other renewable resources? You know, there's always going to be some agreement that we're in. If we do a partial, then Tri-State is still covering those same partial requirements that we've had in the past. And if other, if we're putting in our own renewables and having somebody else firm that, we're always going to have a firming entity somewhere. You know, part, being part of the balancing authority. So it's possible that we would have a contract with a third party. They're the ones that are responsible for going out of the markets and making sure they can meet our load profile. They're going to have enough spending reserves. I mean, obviously, we are going to have solar available to us at midnight.
But they can try to get wind, they can try to get hydro. And possibly if they aren't having the, those kind of resources, then it would be a, a natural gas type of resource right now until energy storage becomes more prevalent within our area. Tim, I saw Eric had another question. We hit that with Eric right now, too.
Sorry, yes, Dan, that would be.
I, I saw Eric had asked a question earlier too about transmission assets. And the, the quick answer to that is that we, La Plata Electric actually did not sell its transmission act assets to Tri-State. We still own those. So quick answer there.
Right. Eric had asked if, if we will need to own some transmission assets, should we leave LP, Tri-State, I think? George and May Morley ask, La Plata County has a large amount of natural gas. Why are you lowering the national, excuse me, the natural gas portion from 18 to 15%? Shouldn't we use local resources? Let's see, do either of the board directors want to take that, crack at that? I could give my opinion and Dan, maybe you can back me up on this. I think Dan Sly demonstrated that that natural gas is basically from the portion of power that we get from Tri-State presently. And yes, there is natural gas here locally. That could be some sort of firming resource in our portfolio at some point. But at the moment, we, we didn't have, have the facilities or the resources to put together a natural gas power plant. That would be a little more expensive than LPA would probably take on by itself. We would also have to find a way to lift the amount of, so, excuse me, power that we can generate locally, which we're currently not able to do. That is a possibility under a, a partial contract. But again, it would be a, it would probably be more expensive for us than it would be to utilize solar and perhaps solar storage at some point. Dan, am I off base on that or is that?
Sounds good to me, Tim.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, George and May. Let's see, the next question is from Victor Rudolph. And he says, I have not heard much discussion of the need for storage to make large-scale adoption of renewables possible. Could you elaborate on how that is handled in the cost analysis? What infrastructure is required or is LPA planning to buy that off-time power on the spot market? Counting out others, others to provide storage or underutilized non-renewable generation? That's a, that's a, several questions in there. But we'll do our best to try and answer that question. Again, I'll look to either of the directors. And I'm going to look at Dan again one more time.
Yeah, no problem. Vic, good to hear from you. You know, storage is something, I love talking storage. It's a fun topic. We're, something we're definitely looking at. Obviously, a lot of talk about lithium ion is a popular technology right now for electric energy storage, very popular with electric vehicles. Hopefully some new others, battery chemistries are coming out as well too, that bring that cost down and energy densities up. And so we're watching it. It's still quite expensive right now. And then, you know, obviously with, with chemicals or safety concerns as well. So we're, we're watching that market and then seeing which places that might make sense. Now, I, I think to unpack some of the rest of your question there, I, I think there might be want to explain how we would be replacing power if, if we went, let's say for a full exit from Tri-State. There's third-party marketers, aggregators out there. I'll say load aggr, or generation aggregators. And so what La Plata Electric does is we provide our load profile to this load act or generation aggregator. And then they are responsible for going out and acquiring the generation assets to meet our load profile hour by hour by hour. Now they can meet a lot of the daytime load, obviously with solar resources. And by the time they acquire multiple solar resources, the diversity increases. Very unlikely to have clouds that go over both northern and solid, southern Colorado, maybe at the same time. And so you get some diversification there. Then after you layer in some wind and some hydro, we have even more diversification there. And so you get a pretty good solid profile, something that starts to get fairly dispatchable. Once you get to that point, they might have acquired a lot more capacity than La Plata Electric needs. Maybe we only need 100 megawatts to serve our daytime load. And they've acquired or they have access to 200 megawatts. They serve La Plata Electric's needs. And then they sell the excess back into the market. So usually it's the other way around where they have oversupplied or over acquired generation. And then they'll sell the remainder back into the market at times of oversupply. And obviously times of, there could be times of undersupply where they're purchasing from the market. They are the ones that are taking that risk at that time, at whatever the market pricing volatility, volatility might be. La Plata Electric would be insulated from that. We would have a fixed contract with that third party. We would know what our pricing would be at a solid level all the way for 15 years, let's say. So that's how that sort of gets packaged together. So there, there really wouldn't be La Plata Electric going out on the spot market and buying that, that would be done by that, that third-party aggregator. Think, let's see, has that covered everything you asked there? Think that, that covered it, Tim?
Yeah, I would just add, Dan, that we would, we would utilize power purchase agreements with these aggregators that would, would not require us to enter into the spot market. That, that is, maybe the aggregator would do that, but we would be buffered by their contract with us. Power purchase agreements are also called, referred to as PPAs. So you hear lots of acronyms thrown around in this industry. And if I, if I throw some at you and you're not sure, I apologize. I try to, we try to keep those as an explanation. But i- in any event, those would buffer us from the spot market type of things. The other thing I would perhaps mention is that curve that Dan showed you at the beginning where solar power started out at 359, a megawatt, $359 a megawatt in 10 years ago. And it's dropped to about 40. Batteries are doing a similar curve right now. And we're not at the bottom of that curve yet. But over time, there's a high expectation in industry that, that it will have a very similar curve. And so perhaps in a few years, battery storage or other forms of chemical storage like Dan mentioned will be sufficiently inexpensive to be able to shave peaks and provide capacity for high demand. So next question is from Ellen Roberts. Hi, Ellen. Good to hear from you. She's a District Four resident in Durango Hills. And my question, her question relates to biomass energy. She'd like to know what consideration the board has made to include in the future LPA power portfolio this particularly timely use, given Colorado's wildfires of a plentiful renewable resource. Biomass can complement solar and wind as a baseload fuel source. So I'd like to see it in the mix. Thanks. Either of our directors want to chime in on that? I, I will say that I think that is also a potential baseline, baseload fuel source. From my perspective, Ellen, I don't, I think it also has some carbon emissions issues. Not nearly, not necessarily as bad as, as perhaps coal, but that's a consideration. We'd have to figure that into a carbon mix. We'd also have to determine costs, whether they are sufficiently competitive with solar and wind to be able to, to provide the best value to the members. And again, that would be something where if, if a developer were able to provide a power purchase agreement, a PPA to us that included that mix, I think we would be interested in that as a local renewable. But I think it will all come down to the details of that offering, that PPA offering. And it's a carbon emissions. Does anybody else on the staff or anything want to say anything about that? Add to what I just said or, or delete what I just?
Tim, I'll just add, you know, obviously we, the biomass project in Pagosa Springs that we were looking at for a long time there. Lot of merits to it, Ellen. I know you've been a strong supporter of that and it's a, it's a different, different beast, I'll say, than, than solar or wind, just because there's so much more going on with it. You have clearing forests and, and, you know, reducing wildfire hazard, more jobs and that sort of thing. And it is, you know, definitely something to be, else to be considered. And we'll take it at its merits as, as things show up as options.
Thank you, Ellen. I hope that answered your question. Let's see, we have Lisa Massey, who asks, three-phase power, three-phase power suppliers rumored to have been promised to the Tiffany area for over 10 years. With most of its farmers and residents at the end of the line and no additional power available, will this ever happen? We are in County Road 327 and sustainability on 200 amps is impossible. And I definitely have to ask Dan to, or, or one of the staff to answer that.
Hoping Jerry was going to unmute. I can talk about our, our long-range planning anyway to help you with that, maybe some, Lisa. Certainly as we look at to the upgrades that are needed at La Plata Electric's system, we do have design criteria on when a line moves from single phase to three phase. And usually has to do with loading in the area. And so once the loading exceeds a certain limit, then we do extend three phases into the area. Now that would be for LP's operational needs. A customer had needs whereby they needed three-phase power specifically to run a large pump or something like that. And then we have a line extension policy that governs how that occurs. And then it is the customer's responsibility to pay for that kind of three-phase upgrade. But if, if the load is there, then LPA upgrades it to three phases. Jerry, do you have anything, Dad?
No, I think you covered it really well.
Sorry, I mean, I'm mute, Tiffany. I'm sorry, it's not there yet, but we will definitely take that into, into our planning as Dan said. And I hope that helped with that answer. So the next one is Virginia Miller Kavanaugh. I think, Virginia, weren't you a director on the board at one point, I believe? So thank you for participating and asking a question. If we buy out or buy down in order to buy from other power sources, wouldn't the transmission needed to buy outside of Tri-State have to be purchased from Tri-State as well? Have they provided those costs to LPA? And Dan, you're, you're the man again.
Tim, I think you can answer this one.
I probably could. Well, I, I'll give it a try and you can correct me if.
All right.
Yes, there are, there are assets that were, or transmission assets that Tri-State has invested in over the years to provide power to La Plata Electric that are relatively specific to, to, to La Plata Electric. That, that would not necessarily be something that they could continue to use for other of their members. Those are often referred to as stranded assets. So if we were to buy out of the contract with Tri-State and exit in a full exit, we would likely have to buy some of those stranded assets. We have not yet fine-tuned what that calculation would be exactly. That would be something that would have to go through a more rigorous examination in any kind of an exit negotiation and determination of those costs. But they are substantial. They're in the millions of dollars. And they would be assets that would serve our members. For example, there is a transmission line that runs essentially from the Durango area over to Pagosa. And, and that is the only source of power into, to Pagosa for that, that level of power at this point. Obviously, we would want to keep an asset like that, for example, so that we could continue to keep the lights on for our Archuleta members. Dan, do you have anything to add to that? Did I do okay?
You did great, Tim. You know, I, I think Virginia had also asked about outside, you know, getting power from the outside into here too. And yes, Tri-State does deliver that. And we continue to buy from Tri-State. If we were no longer a member of Tri-State, then we would still acquire that transmission, but through what's called a network integration transmission service agreement. It's called NITSA. And we've done some research on that and have an understanding of what those costs would be. That's governed or regulated, I should say. And LPA would be a open access trend, you know, user open access transmission tariff. It's a published tariff that everybody would use to access that transmission system.
Dan, thank you for, that, that was a, a, a part of that question I think I missed. So thanks for helping with that. I'll just add that when we looked at this with our power supply committee at the beginning of 2019, we, we had a, an analysis that showed that the amount that we pay for transmission currently to Tri-State, which is embedded in our overall power cost, is likely about the same amount that we would pay if we exited. So all of our calculations for what it would cost to exit and what our power supply would cost, should we exit, include that cost. And we feel fairly confident around the parameters of that cost at this point. Okay, I hope that helped answer the question, Virginia. Thank you for asking. The next question is another one from Eric Potter. He says, one more here. We have several long-term successful hydro generation facilities in the era, excuse me, in the area. Tacoma, Ames and Yuray. Is there any, although I think Yuray is outside of our service territory, Eric. Is there any consideration for hydro generation? Jessica, did you want to answer that?
I love that question. Because I, there's a lot of hydro potential, actually. So, yeah, Dan and I have been looking at maps and areas. Definitely Tacoma and actually hydrokinetics, which are small turbines that you can put in irrigation canals, which do not cause impacts to fish and wildlife. So those are definitely opportunities. The only problem is, again, we're still confined by the long-term contract. And we cannot develop our own generation, our own hydro generation, because it is considered renewable. And it would hit our cap. We've already at the 5%. And so we, we just can't be building this under our current contract. Dan, did you have anything else to add? But it is a great resource that we have in this area.
Now, I'll also add bio seed and lemon hydro into that list there as well. Tri-State currently purchases the output of bio seed. You know, I have, I would love to see that being part, directly part of LPA's portfolio. And hopefully we can, we can get there one of these days.
And one more point on hydro is, is it's baseload power. So that's why it's also so important, is that the only baseload power in the US is coal, gas, hydro and nuclear. At least right now. And so that's why hydro power is very attractive and important to our portfolio.
I will add one more to that. That's geothermal is also a base loop power. And thank you, Eric. I hope that answered your question. Thank you, Jessica, as well. So Corina Andrietta, Andrea, I probably mispronounced or mangled your name and I apologize. Has there been any analysis done around what kind of economic impact our area will see with LPA generating more energy in our area? Particularly the number of jobs and what kind of jobs we can expect to see. Also, how much of the community's money will in turn be kept locally? Those, that's a good question, I, I think. And I, I don't recall that we have specifically with an LPA gotten down to specific numbers of jobs or exactly what kind of, well, what kind of jobs? We've, we've reviewed that to some degree. And, or how so, exactly how much money the communities will in turn see being retained in this local economy? Other than each of the, when you take a look at the overall power. each of the, when you take a look at the overall power bill that we paid to Tri-State, which is $72 million, to the extent that we pay that to a generator locally, that proportion of the money would stay in this community, at least initially. Its first round would stay here rather than than leave the community. But that is a, that is a type of analysis that as we look at which option we would be taking with regards to either a buy-down or a buy-out that we would look closely at and maybe ask for some support from the college or other places to to be able to help us with that. Does anybody want to add anything to that or correct anything that I said?
I would just also mention the the tax, property tax implications of having local generation as well as another strong item to consider there.
Very good point, Dan. Thank you. So to the extent that we, the property here is improved, it generates more property tax for the counties that it is generated in. Thank you, Curry, I think. I don't want to butcher your name too much there. John Purser asks another question here. Let's see, in consideration of Tri-State's responsible energy plan, can we not only meet but exceed our strategic goal for carbon emissions reduction while remaining with Tri-State? You know, that is yet to be determined, I think, to some degree. Tri-State has a a plan. It is not yet implemented. That plan and and maybe Dan could help me with this a little bit, but the we are seeking to to have a a carbons emissions reduction and most of the the strategic our strategic goal relies on on a carbon remission emissions reduction. Whereas Tri-State's responsible energy plan often speaks of a value of renewables. And those renewables are are not necessarily always equal to a one-to-one ratio of carbon emissions reductions. And I'm going to stop there because I think Dan might also have something to add to this.
I can add a little bit to that, Tim. The the other part of it is the local aspect of it as well. You know, we not only want to reduce our carbon, yes, that's in our carbon goal, but it's also a strategic goal of ours to have local economic development as well. And so that's that's part of it. We can control that, you know, as Tim was alluding to, we can control that some of those aspects a little more if we have that, obviously, within our own grasp. And it just provides that flexibility and autonomy that cooperatives want to have. So, yes, Tri-State may be able to cover some of the carbon aspects of of what we're looking to achieve. But there, that's part of the story. The other part is the the economics for us and the the local aspects of it.
Thank you.
I did. Thank you. I just wanted to tie this back to Karina's question because she makes some really good points that we'll look into, but it's the economic impact of the area and creating jobs and how much money we're going to keep in the community. So again, what we're looking for is definitely carbon reduction, which the Tri-State's plan can do. But we also want to develop it here, keep the money locally and actually partner with our local schools and colleges to actually provide STEM education to the kids. And that's something that we have talked to Fort Lewis College and others about is that if that's an opportunity, we'd love to expand the opportunity for these kids to learn more STEM education. So it's it's just something that we feel is pretty important to this area.
Also builds a card of kids that might work at LPA someday. So we're, I said we would stop at 8:20 and we're at 14:00. So I've got a couple more questions here. Hopefully, we can get these answered. So another one from Monique DiGiorgio. LPA has shown extraordinary leadership in setting carbon and cost goals for 2030. However, some directors, specifically Director McWilliams, seem to not be supporting renewable energy or exploring alternatives to our current long-term contract with Tri-State. Monique would like to ask Director McWilliams specifically why she does not support low-cost renewable energy. What does she think about the goals set by the board? And how does she plan to support that goal as she represents District Four? So pointed there, but Sue.
Hi, Monique. Thank you for the question. And it's not that I am against renewables at all. In fact, before we moved to La Plata County, our old home in Monizuma County has solar on it. And we have solar on a cabin that we own. And we are currently installing solar on our house here in La Plata County. We were limited, as Dan mentioned earlier, by the voltage requirements and restrictions. And so it's just been recently that we've been allowed to install solar here. So I'm not against renewables at all. I just want to make sure that we are doing it in the right manner to best serve all of our members and that we are actually saving money and reducing rates back to the membership and not just going off on a whim that may cost our members more. So I'm not opposed to renewables at all, nor the carbon reduction. I just want to make sure that we're cautious in doing so and doing it in the right manner.
Jessica, did you have something you want to say on that? No.
Um, no, just that, you know, I think it's important for the membership that we look at the contract with Tri-State. It is a 50-year contract, which I've never seen before. I've never seen that length of a contract in energy. And so it's, you know, who would have known that pandemic would have happened? So I think it's important that we as members ask Tri-State for more flexibility in the contract to account for things like pandemics and cyber attacks and renewable energy. I don't think many people would have known the battery storage would have been something that we would have looked at. So, you know, I think it's it's definitely important. We're already seeing just conservatively with our numbers, even at looking at a partial contract with Tri-State that we could save a million dollars a year. So it's something that is important to us and we all live in the community, all of us do. We all pay LPA. We all have families. Many of us have families that live here and so we, you know, energy, energy costs are important to everybody and just as much as us is our membership. So it is our responsibility to examine and constantly reach for more and want to change and look for efficiencies. So it's it should be a natural progression for us to ask questions with our current contract.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, a couple more here. John Purser asks, how can battery storage be considered renewable? Does the cost of battery storage include the cost of recycling the batteries and cost and the cost of environmental damage related to mining for the minerals in batteries? Either the directors or any other staff, John, you want to take that?
Sure, I'll take that. Give you, give you a breather. So battery storage in itself, you're correct. It in and of itself, it's not renewable. It's a component part of a larger renewable system. So a battery can be charged up by by anything providing power. You can plug a battery system into a coal plant. You can plug it into solar farm. You can plug it into hydro. And it's an important part of a lot of the renewable strategies because, as of course, obvious, the sun doesn't shine all the all day long. So if you can use some of your energy coming off of, for example, a solar system, you can charge your battery and then discharge that battery during the peak hours of the day when everybody comes home and turns on their TV and turns on their vacuum cleaners and goes about their evening, you know, their day, you know, their days as the as the weather is right or the light is right now. That is really why why batteries are central and and to to the renewable energy discussion. But you're correct, in and of itself, it's 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 not a renewable resource. It's part of a larger system that is that is or can be a renewable solution.
Right. Thank you, John. And there was a piece there about the cost of Jessica, would you like to weigh in there?
Oh, I was wondering why you kept asking if I wanted to answer. I'm just clearing them out.
All right. Yeah, there's a little note that comes up in the Q and A that says you're going to answer this question live and I don't want to cut off the CEO.
Okay, you keep, yeah, you keep asking me. I'm like, I don't have anything else. No, I'm sorry.
I don't mean to be putting you on the spot anyway. Backfired. So John also asked about recycling, cost of recycling batteries.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm wondering if you're seeing Phil May's question on your screen. It was one of the earlier ones.
We were answering power supply questions first.
Oh, okay. I I thought that since this one was Tri-State, it might be related, but I will. I just wanted to make sure you saw it.
I did see that. I saw there's two on there that are not related to power supply that I was going to try and get to. And then we should be finished. So I I appreciate that. Thanks, Hillary. In any event, John, I'm not sure if the cost of recycling the batteries and the environmental damage is embedded in the price of those at this point. I do know that in electric cars, that I've learned that recycling of the batteries, there is a cost associated with that that is embedded in it in its cost and that they are one of the most recycled components of any car, including even the 12-volt batteries that you have in internal combustion engines. They're highly recycled all the time and I believe that's embedded in the cost or it is in the cost when you dispose of it. Another question on power supply, Monique DiGiorgio again. Holy Cross Energy also has a renewable energy and greenhouse gas goal similar to LPA. To get there, the utility is pioneering innovative ways to use electric vehicles and EV charging to help manage its electrical grid, excuse me. Does LPA have any plans similar to our sister cooperative? Dan, I'm gonna punt that to you. I think that's right up your alley.
Yeah, Monique, we actually collaborate very closely with Holy Cross. And I think, as you know, you've, we've got a electric charging equipment that we hand out, just like Holy Cross does. And when we do that, that is a managed charger. So, yes, we'll hand the customer a charger for their electric vehicle. But LPA does have the ability to watch and curtail and shape that usage so it matches and tries to stay off of our peak. So that's definitely something we're looking at. We are also looking at a DER platform. And what that will allow us to do is to combine all the various different protocols from smart thermostats, energy storage systems, inverters, electric vehicles, grid interactive water heaters and assortment of different things. Combine those and use that DER platform. DER stands for distributed energy resources. And try to try to shape, use that almost like energy storage and shape things around. So it's it's an exciting phase to come of La Plata Electric that we're kicking off and which also happens to be very similar to something Holy Cross is doing. So we're definitely collaborating and working towards the same objectives.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Monique, for the question. Hopefully, that addressed it. All right. So Phil May, I'm gonna finally ask your question and I apologize if if you had to wait a long time. I thought that was less of a power supply and more of a finance question, so I kind of left it to this portion. We only have two non-power supply questions at this point. So your question is, I understand that in 2019, LPA expressed its concern about Tri-State's debt load and the fact that Tri-State has not attempted to reduce the debt principal. What has LPA learned about Tri-State's debt reduction plan? What are the options LPA is considering in response to this? Thanks. Actually, it's from Joan McKitchen, District Four. So Carl, do you want to chime in there and or I'll help you out if if you
No, I'm I'm good, Tim. This is my time to shine.
Thank you.
Hopefully. Yeah, what do we know about what they're going to do to reduce their debt? The the simple answer is not a huge amount. I can tell you what I do know. They had a sizable refinance earlier this year, which has certainly reduced some of the interests that they've got to pay. But obviously, the the principal is somewhat unchanged. Although the other thing they're doing is they are working on a significant expense reduction program. And one thing they won't be able to reduce arbitrarily is the interest they need to pay their lenders. So I think the combination of those two is how they are looking to address it. They they are, they have a big team that deals with their corporate finance and how they structure their their debt load. It is significant and it is a worry. And I think the simple answer is what are we doing to address that is that's really what we're talking about tonight. We, we want to explore all our options, whether we're partially with Tri-State, 100% with Tri-State or not with them at all. And really to have the flexibility, I think that's a word Dan has mentioned, I think, a few people have mentioned this evening, to have some flexibility to do things on our own, to do them locally. So we are somewhat insulated from what may happen with their debt load and their debt servicing obligations. So I can't give you too much of an answer on what they're doing because we don't know. And that's one of our, the main issues that we've we've had in the past with Tri-State is that there are things we don't know and we'd like them to be more forthcoming. I would say to their credit, that has definitely improved. Only in the short time that I've been here, I've seen an improvement in that. So fingers crossed, we will find out more. But for the time being, the best thing we can do is to explore our options and to to gain the flexibility that will will help us to ride any potential storms in the future.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you, Joan, for reading and hopefully that answered your question. Final question, John Purser. Was the board aware of John Richel's position of CEO of King Energy when he was appointed to the board? And was there any discussion of a potential conflict of interest? I I think I'll I'll speak up here on this one and take a crack at it and essentially, yes. I'm pretty sure we were all aware of that. That was disclosed. That was part of his his application as well. Discussion of a potential conflict of interest. You know, it is it is unlikely that we will always get board members who don't have some potential conflict of interest. There's 12 board members who represent a wide variety of community members who are elected to the Board of LPA or in John's case, appointed. And there is always that potential of conflict of interest. We have a very strong process from our attorney and policies that direct us to disclose those so that we can be assured that if there is a vote or an action that the board has to take and that that director is is a part of that or could be a part of, that they are, we are aware of that and they can recuse themselves from any action that might affect or that conflict of interest. Does anyone in the staff or other directors want to answer anything on that? Or add to that? All right. So let's go to the fun part here. Instead of hearing me, I'm going to introduce Hillary Knox, our Vice President of Communications. She's the mastermind that put all of this together and and has been doing an incredible job of improving the communication both amongst and with our members and and our board and staff. And I'm gonna turn it over to her to take care of the the drawing here for the the door prize. And Hillary, you want to take it over?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Tim. I really just developed this whole thing only so I could get to be the good guy who gives away prizes. That that was my whole rationale. But thank you all for hanging in there. It's been a really But thank you all for hanging in there. It's been a really interesting town hall. This is our last one or fourth one and I found this discussion really, really fascinating. I drew names earlier this evening and I just want to make sure that the names I drew are still with us and you are. So, I am pleased to announce that the two winners of our door prize tonight are Bill and Lori Swap and Virginia William Kavanaugh. So, you will be receiving an email from us probably early next week with giving you a selection of $50 gift cards to choose from based on your interest. And we will arrange to get those mailed out to you. And thank you very much for your participation tonight.
And I want to thank everyone, including all the staff who took time out and their evenings and our other two directors, John Richel and Sue McWilliams. And I want to remind you that we also have regularly scheduled board meetings each month as well as there are several committees. They're all open to the public. And you can find how to access those meetings and the times and the agendas and the minutes and so forth at our website and Hillary has graciously put that up there for us. Thank you, everyone, for having attended and asking great questions. And we look forward to engaging with you again in the future. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.